Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I apologize for the delay. It is Wednesday, November 6th. And I will note for the record that all three commissioners are here and present in the Nat U Hill Room. We'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And I'm so glad we have this statement. We are heading for some troubled waters. All right, with that, we do have an agenda modification.
Yes, I've moved that we continue Item C, Reed and Sons Construction Agreement for Karst Athletic Complex, until November the 13th, 2024.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor of continuing the Reed and Sons Construction Agreement, Item C, until the next meeting, which is November 13th, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next, we have department updates. Good morning, Ms. Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few updates. Our wastewater detections of COVID are trending down as of October 29th. But there has been a small increase in emergency department visits for COVID-like illnesses. Flu activity is currently low. High-dose flu shots are now recommended for those 65 and older and for adults 18 and older who have a history of solid organ transplant. Our public health clinic has vaccines available for all ages and also offers free blood pressure screenings. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much. Are there any other departments that have an update offered for us this morning? It looks like Mr. Baton, our GIS coordinator. Dr. Baton?
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
There you are.
Sorry, it sounds like there's some feedback. Yeah, just a quick update. Just letting everybody know that our integration of live election data was successful into our dashboards yesterday. So we had that going. They're up now. They'll be updated again within, as I receive data from voter registration. The process went pretty seamlessly. It was a great kind of bit of teamwork between the surveyor's office and voter reg as well of getting that data from voter reg over to my office in the rain and things like that. So it was a long night. Yeah, that's it. That's all I got.
Well, we do want to thank you for getting that data uploaded. And it really was a great dashboard. Do you have any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I just appreciate that you created that and it went well.
Commissioner Giffens?
I was looking at it all evening. I kept refreshing, refreshing. When I got on this morning to look at it, it said that it still only had 78 of the precincts. Is that correct, or do I just need to refresh again?
No. Yeah, so that is what the dashboard reflects. And that is data that's coming from the export from Hart Inter-Civic. And so I looked at it this morning. There are numbers for those outstanding precincts in the data. The data set we get as a CSV has a field for basically precincts reporting. And it's either reporting, partially reporting, or not reporting. And for some reason, those handful of precincts are showing as not reporting, although the data is coming in. So I think it's more of an issue with that, the data that was being pulled from the Hart Inter-Civic. So we're aware of that. And yeah, the data is there.
I really do appreciate the fact, and the fact that you put it together so quickly is amazing.
Yeah, it was, again, it was a lot of teamwork between the GIS division from Tron, myself, and Irina, really kind of working through it and making sure things work. And then also the Election Board, John Fernandez, helped a lot in terms of making sure this was tailored. And you as well, Commissioner Giffens, for some of your comments and suggestions.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And for those who are looking for it, it is on the homepage of the county's website. I do want to take a moment to thank everyone who served as a worker yesterday and during early voting. Thank everybody who ran for office for running. We appreciate your participation in this great democracy. And I know that poll workers have had a long day yesterday. So really do appreciate their efficiency and professionalism. Any other department updates? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This is the portion of our meeting that is reserved for comment on items that are not on our agenda. You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. We ask that you provide your name and county of residence. Each commenter is limited to three minutes per person. Do not see any hands raised, so we'll move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of minutes from October 30th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 30th, 2024, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Claims Docket Accounts Payable, November 6th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Auditor Gregory here joining us today. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for November 6th, 2024 totals $1,613,506.69. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. And just a quick note, there are a few ARPA claims going out to our community. The, there's a claim for the Karst Athletic Complex project, jail transition project, and convention center improvements. So it's in works in our community.
Great. Thank you so much. I sent a couple of questions in, but they were really clarification questions. So I'm not too worried about them.
I'll get those answers.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Any public comment? Well, I should ask first if my colleagues have any questions or comments.
I just want to congratulate Auditor Gregory on her election yesterday. And you as well, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Claims Docket Accounts Payable, November 6th, 2024, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to new business.
Move approval of contract with Harold Fish, Inc. for the Breezeway HVAC system replacement at the Convention Center. Fund name, ARPA, fund number 8950, in an amount of $31,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kreider.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building and Fleet Manager. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Harold Fish, Inc. in the amount of $31,500 to furnish and install heating and cooling equipment to condition the air in the enclosed breezeway space at the main entrance of the Monroe County Convention Center.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens? No. It's important work, has to get done. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
See if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harold Fish, Inc. contract for Breezeway HVAC system replacement at the Convention Center, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of Chews Premier Painting LLC for exterior window painting at the showers building north. Fund number 2022 GeoBond, fund num, that was fund name, 2022 GeoBond. Fund number 4815 in an amount of $5,295.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Chews Premier Painting LLC in the amount of $5,295 to prep and paint windows on the east, south, and west exteriors on the Monroe County end of the showers building.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I'd already been in touch with Mr. Kreider about this. I didn't realize that we had any offices there that faced toward the south, but he explained to me what that was. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. I'm glad this is getting done. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract with Chews Premier Painting LLC for exterior window painting at the showers building north, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Our next item is item A, please. Thank you.
Move approval of easement agreement with Southern Monroe Water Authority regarding the Smithville Diamonds.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and then I believe there's some people from the Water Authority here, so they can fill in where I, where my gaps are. What we're looking at is an easement for the Water Authority so that they can increase their infrastructure. One of their major concerns that they expressed to us in meetings is fire protection, particularly at the point, and making sure that they have adequate water pressure to get there. In order to do this, they were looking at the area by the old Smithville School that we own, where the ball fields are. As someone who has a daughter who's played there, the bulk of this is in kind of the scrub rush area that's not really utilized by this. And I think the other part is along the property line, which may have, which may have a slight use as far as the driveway coming in and things like that. But they've agreed to work with Smithville Diamonds to make sure there's a minimum of disruption. I think once they get the pipe in the ground, people will not even know it's there. But this is for, in part because of fire protection and also water service to citizens of Monroe County. Speaking with Commissioner Giffens, who met with the group, she wanted us to have this easement done at no cost because it's, would just be a cost to the, to the users of the authority. So if they have anything they want to add.
Please give us your name and.
Good morning. I am Nathan Walker, Midwestern Engineers. Derek Wiggins, also with Midwestern Engineers. And Rod Ira from Southern Monroe Water. And yeah, Mr. Cockrell explained basically, you know, what we're trying to accomplish is to just request an easement upon the ballpark property at Smithville. It's going to improve service all throughout the south part of the county.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for bringing the map. I appreciate it. Yay!
And if you'd like a closer look.
We have a small version of it in our packet that we're able to look at. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
We were here, I met with Penny and Jeff and.
If you can get to the microphone, sir? I'm sorry. If you could go to the microphone.
And we didn't have any electricity in the county. That's right after the big disaster. And luckily, as I got closer, I'm like, this is not going to happen. We're not going to have a meeting. I saw the traffic lights were working because all the way to probably Old 37, New 37, South Monroe County, there was no power. Thank you, Jeff.
And I think it's important to note, included in this, if, there is kind of a pumping station or something like that, so that would help with the water pressure. That's why they needed so much in the kind of scrub area. And there is a driveway off of Fairfax to, already there, that would service that property.
How long, how long is this easement for?
It's perpetual.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it benefits the health and welfare of citizens of our county, which is the reason I'm supporting this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I've been hearing about water problems in this area going back, I think, about 20 years now. So I'm very pleased to hear that something's being done about it. And I'm sure it'll be much appreciated.
Yeah, we've kind of had a big concern because we can't keep our tank at Lakeview Station up to where it needs to be. And there's times it gets down to four or five feet. And it should be, ideally, it should be at 25 feet. And in the wintertime, we're able to get that water back up because so many people aren't at the point, you know, flushing toilets, doing things like that, drinking. And this will kind of be a stopgap measure to make sure we get enough water pumped up there to keep the tank full because a place like the point, and you have a fire there, and we've already got a low tank, that's bad. So this really eases our minds a lot to get this done. So sure appreciate your patience in looking into this and approving it.
Thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or you may come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the easement agreement with Southern Monroe Water Authority regarding Smithville Diamonds, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything we need to do here as far as signatures or?
We still need to run it through the county council because it is the easement. And so once, and that'll be on the agenda for November 12th. And so we will get it through them, and then we can have everybody sign it and get it recorded.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Good luck. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Yes. Move approval of American Rescue Plan Act's contracts. Fund name, ARPA, fund number 8950, in an amount of $2,951,71.86.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, would you like to?
I will walk us through the projects. I will say that there are some slight changes to what's in the packet as to what the final documents are. I think the biggest one is that the Bloomington Transit Fixed Route, that agreement, that Exhibit 1 is an interlocal. Talking with their attorneys, they feel that it needs to be an interlocal because they are a governmental, more a governmental unit. And they thought the portion of the statute that says we can contract for services really didn't apply to this. So that's probably the biggest change. But the Summit Hill is for the childcare facility and low-income apartments. I think there's a minor change in that one indicating that if they don't have the invoices to us by December 10th, we can agree to extend that, that timeline. The next one is for Area 10 Council, I guess, yeah, Area 10, the Rural Transit Shadow Service. This is just a continuation of what we are currently doing. We've indicated in here that it is a monthly amount. And so our current agreements ride dependent, but given how ARPA works, and we don't want to have any additional funding, we are just, we are just assuming that that number of rides will occur and that this is to pay them for providing that service, similar to what we're doing with Bloomington Transit. And then it also indicates that the two, that the current agreement, if there's anything left over, it will just extend this agreement. So we're making sure that we are utilizing the federal funding. Next one's Courage, Courage for Change. They are a group that deals with housing support for mentally ill and substance abuse issues. And so this is a $5,000 grant towards them. This is, I believe ultimately this will help them do some of their projects they want to do. But this is basically direct funding to them to accomplish their mission. Hoosier Hills Food Bank, we are paying half the cost of the generator. That's $108,000. And that is so that when the power goes out, as our previous commenter was noting, that they can still keep the temperature on if it's appropriate. The Bloomington Transit Fixed Route, that is a route that will run from downtown to the Park 48 and back. It's adding, and we are paying for the portion of the costs that are, that where the route is actually outside the city of Bloomington limits. And then the jail locks is, we have a quote to correct, I believe, 92 different jail locks in our current facility. And this is a $490-plus thousand agreement to do that. And it was difficult finding a vendor who could even accomplish this task, given the age and the wear that's currently on those doors. Then on the agenda cover sheet, there is a rural housing loss revenue that was approved by the Commissioner's Administrator, the typically, and we're still working on the process on how to present these to you. But that is just in there to show the other thing we're doing with ARPA. And that is someone who we are reimbursing for an expense that they had incurred as opposed to just paying the vendor directly. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just, I'm just pleased that we're getting money to all of these different groups.
Commissioner Giffens?
I may have misheard that you said that the dollar amount took Courage to change. I thought you, I heard 5,000, but it's actually 500,000?
I may have misspoken. It is not 5,000.
500,000, but maybe I was meaning it at the time, and when you said it, it just seemed right. Yeah. Yeah, but also, this is for two generators for Hoosier Hills Food Bank, and we're splitting the cost with United Way, which really is that we're able to do.
I will note that the dollar amount on our packet is absolutely wrong. And it looks like it's 2.2 million, 834,624 dollars. But I don't think that that is as significant here. I can see where I did the addition then. Because each, each piece has its own contract. Sorry. So it's covered in there. And I will tell you that I'm grateful for Rural Transit and their great work this year in offering the shadow service to the more densely populated parts of the county. They're doing a great job, and I'm excited that they can do it another year. It's unfortunate that Ellisville has not stepped up to pay their portion of the bill for 2025. And I think that's a terrible thing, and I think residents of Ellisville should talk to their town council members. I am grateful for the work that John Connell and the Bloomington Transit Board did. We got to a really good place in terms of an agreement. And thank you, Mr. Cockrell, for getting that last bit ironed out. There was a lot of email going back and forth about the contracts and the language and all of that. So I appreciate all the work that went into all of this, especially from our legal staff, Ms. Purdy. But it is good to get this money out in the community and to help people and change people's lives for the better. It's our last chance to do it for a while, so. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. We do have somebody's hand raised on teams, but I cannot see their name. So TSD, if you could promote them and encourage them to unmute.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I want to echo Commissioner Thomas's statement about the ARPA funds. This has been a great process. It's been a transparent process. It's been a fun one to follow along with. A lot of great, great places to put the funds in such needed areas. I think the home repair comes to mind, the car soccer fields. And I think the transit really speaks to that as well. Chris Myers at the Rural Transit, what she does with the amount of money and what we're getting back in the investment has been just tremendous. And then we can't state enough what this, this fund is going to do for just transit service with Bloomington Transit and with John Connell and all of that that went into this. It was a big, heavy lift, and I think everybody involved for it. But it's getting this to Park 48, to Ivy Tech, to Cook Medical, Singoda, Semtr. Getting that for the community employment opportunities, this is, this is a big deal. This has been 42 years, I think, in the making. So I just want to give everybody a pat on the back for this. The work continues in this to make this transit service, service people want to use, can use, and will use. So the work continues, but it's a day to be very thankful and pleased, and I appreciate everybody's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MG. And I will, I will note that the chamber is working to, with these businesses and Ivy Tech out on the west side. Because right now, the service will have a frequency of once an hour. And with the support of area businesses, we can make this a more frequent route, which would be wonderful. So I appreciate the chamber's assistance with that. So thank you, Mr. MG.
Does anyone have questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the American Rescue Plan Act contracts, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-46, the Cutrite Boat Storage PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ah, there you are. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, this is Ordinance 2024-46, also known as PUO-24-2. Petition site is located in Polk Township, Section 16. It consists of two parcels. One parcel is 4.0 acres and the other is 11.3 acres, totaling 15.3 acres. It's all zoned forest reserve currently. The petitioner is requesting to establish a PUD outline plan, PUD outline plan on the subject property. The intent behind establishing the PUD is to operate the property under a mixed set of uses, including boat storage, residential, and office. Area A of the PUD will consist of five acres and include the following permitted uses: boat storage, single-family dwelling, and office. Area B will consist of the remaining 10.3 acres and include the permitted uses as defined in the Conservation 2.5 Zone of the forthcoming county development ordinance, including uses such as single-family detached dwelling, short-term rental owner occupied, tourist home or cabin, and home-based business. The petitioner does intend to perform a Type E administrative subdivision additionally to these two parcels in order to adjust the shared lot line between the two lots to establish Area A with five acres and Area B with the 10.3 acres. Here we have a location map. It's south of the causeway. Site conditions map on the right side of the screen, that's showing slopes greater than 18%. It is an Area 3 of the environmental constraints overlay, meaning that slopes greater than 18% are protected from any land disturbance activity. Here we have the current zoning map, showing forest reserve in that Area 3 designation. And then the comprehensive plan has it designated as farm and forest. Here are the definitions for the uses that are requested for Area A. This is following the Chapter 802 current definitions for those uses. And here's some details about Area A that is proposed to be five acres after that Type E subdivision. Again, boat storage facilities, residence, and an office on this lot. Approximately 1.7 acres of the five acres will be utilized for boat storage initially. An expansion area of approximately a half acre on the north end of Area A. An expansion area of approximately a half acre on the north end of Area A is possible for future growth of additional storage spaces of about 20. The amended PUD statement details that Area A will be used for open and covered boat storage with a maximum of 50 boat storage spaces. The existing manufactured residence on the property is to be upgraded and remodeled to serve as a residence and an office, and the petitioner expects that that residence in Area A be the home of an onsite slash live-in manager for the boat storage facility. Following development standards apply under the limited business zone under the proposed CDO for Area A, with additional standards that are listed here, including setback from 100-year flood elevation of the detention area for surface storage, improvement setback from the flood elevation level of a minimum of 10 feet horizontally and 1 foot vertically, and any structure which could be occupied for business or residential purposes shall be separated a minimum of 10 feet horizontally and 2 feet vertically from the 100-year flood elevation of the detention area. Speaking on that detention area, there is a former pond that was on the property, and the petitioner is proposing to reestablish that pond, and that is part of the reason they are requesting, or will be requesting, a Type E subdivision to kind of make sure that the detention area for the boat storage use is all on the lot that will be for Area A. And then one other additional item about that pond, it went to the Drainage Board, and the preliminary plan for that area and that drainage infrastructure was approved by the Drainage Board, and the MS4 Coordinator, or excuse me, the Stormwater Program Manager did provide some comments that I'll get to in a minute. Area B, the southern portion, 10.4 acres, the permitted uses will be defined as proposed Conservation Residential 2.5 Zone of the CDO. Specifically, these uses: single-family detached dwelling, short-term rental owner occupied, tourist home or cabin, home-based business, as I stated. Development standards to follow the CDR Zone with the additional standards of a frontyard and building setback line from State Road 446, the right-of-way being 40 feet. And then here is some additional information regarding Area B. The petitioner did supply a second amended PUD out, statement and outline plan that's included in the packet, and this came about after the Plan Commission hearing. So they stated maximum single-family detached dwellings, two, and they stated upon subdivision of use Area B, the single-family detached dwellings shall be restricted to one dwelling per legal lot. Now, on September 26, the Plan Commission did approve, or excuse me, did suggest a positive recommendation for this petition, vote of six to three, and they did have one condition of approval, and that is listed here in bullet point number two. Area B to include two single-family residences on one lot of record, one being accessory to the other, with the requirement that they follow the underlying zoning district. Upon further review of that condition of approval, its staff understanding that this condition of approval is that one of the dwellings would be considered the primary residence in Area B, and the second dwelling would be considered a accessory dwelling unit, whether detached or attached, noting that that language of being accessory to the other. So therefore, the language in the second amended PUD statement and outline plan that was provided after the Plan Commission hearing would be less restrictive than the Plan Commission's condition of approval by allowing two primary dwellings on one lot rather than one primary dwelling and one accessory dwelling. So for the record, should the Board of Commissioners move in favor of the language currently written in the second amended PUD statement rather than the Plan Commission's condition of approval, the petition must go back to the Plan Commission, as it would be less restrictive than what was originally forwarded. And this information was also communicated to the petitioner yesterday, when staff took a deeper look into the language here about the, the two residences for Area B. Getting back to the design standards for the entire PUD, we have some sections here regarding drainage, conservancy easement, buildable area, and a landscape plan. Drainage for the site is approved by the Monroe County Drainage Board. Driveways, parking areas, and boat storage areas will be stone and not paved. There will be a conservancy easement across portions of Area A and Area B identified by the 15% slope line placed in a conservancy easement in favor of Monroe County Plan Commission, or it's designated. So that'll be 30% of Area A and approximately 55% of Area B, and they're stating that it shall preserve the designated area and its natural straight, prohibiting development or tree removal, except as required for forest management, best management practices published by the DNR. So a total of that conservancy easement across the PUD will be approximately 50% of the area. Buildable area, the office slash residential structure in Area A is, will be located in the area designated as buildable area, currently is there right now as an in-buildable area, so they'll just be upgrading that and doing some remodeling to make it a live-in residence, but also office for the site. Residential structures in Area B will require septic systems, and those will be located in Area A as well, according to the PUD outline plan. Landscape plan, the property is heavily treed. Tree removal will only be necessary for development of the permitted uses, except for trees removed for the development of the uses, trees shall be maintained, and they are stating that there will be no landscaping required for this PUD, given that it's fairly wooded already. There is also a discussion on phasing, so phasing one, two, and three, basically just talking about cleaning up the site, removing of discarded vehicle parts and tires that are strewn about, especially in Area B. Phase two, the development of the boat storage facility and upgrade of the manufactured residence. Phase three, the development of the single-family homes in Area B. And then there's an open phase, there is no timeframe for development of additional boat storage in Area A after the completion of the phase two. They're stating that expansion of that area will only occur if there's a market demand for more covered boat storage. They've also stated that there is the possibility of subdividing Area B, although that's not what they are intending to perform initially, but if they, they want to reserve the opportunity to subdivide that property and establish two lots with each one residence on each lot. Overall, the development must follow Chapter 811, which, which governs planning developments and planning development outline plans. Basically, the development plan after the outline plan is approved must be submitted to the planning department not more than 18 months, following this board's approval. And the development plan shall expire two years after approval unless grading and/or building permits have been obtained and are still current and valid on that date. On this screen in the next slide, I have the second amended PUD statement and outline plan. Again, this is the amended one that came about after the Plan Commission hearing. This is included in the Commissioner's packet for review, and I've covered a lot of the material on here as well. And then here's the, that third page of that second amended PUD statement and outline plan. On the screen now is the original letter to the Plan Commission, stating the background of the site as well as a bit more of the character of the PUD. It was the initial outline plan as well, so it does have some design standards that they originally cited here, things like lighting will be compliant with dark skies, no sidewalks will be installed, some other details there are listed. They also provided a, a conceptual site map that shows the approximate location of the boat storage development, the area to the north as the possible expansion area should the market demand for more storage, and then Area B, you know, showing where the slope line is and where that conservancy easement will begin, and then showing the shaded area as all buildable area. And then these two slides here are just showing that same image, just a little bit zoomed in to give you a bit more detail. Okay, so here on the screen is just a couple pictures that the petitioner provided. It's kind of hard to tell, but you can kind of get an idea of how much materials and old boats and other debris was on the site or is currently still on the site that the petitioner is working to remove and clean up that area so that they can develop it for residential purposes and have the boat storage in the Area A as described. Drainage Board, it went to the Drainage Board on August 13th, 2024. The Stormwater Program Manager, Kelsey Letonia, did provide some comments regarding the development after that Drainage Board meeting, basically ensuring the entire developed area drains through the detention bond during development plan review, determine if additional water quality treatment is necessary based on potential pollutants, and provide drainage easements. They also discussed the drainage to steep slopes and the potential for erosion, and they also asked if there were underground storage tanks on the site, and if, and there would be a phase one environmental study that did not find those underground tanks. So here's just some materials from the Drainage Board packet. You can see the detention pond in the lower southwest corner of Area A. Okay, that brings us to the recommendation. Originally, staff had recommended a negative recommendation based on its incompatibility with the comprehensive plan for farm and forest, and then also stating that Area B, if it wanted to be utilized as residential, it can be essentially subdivided as is with its current acreage and current zoning district to provide that use. So on September 26, the Plan Commission voted six to three to forward this petition to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation, subject to the Highway Engineer and Stormwater Program Manager reports with the following condition: one, Area B to include two single-family residences on one lot of record, one being accessory to the other, with the requirement that they follow the underlying zoning district. And I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments at the outset here, Commissioner Githens?
Well, a lot of my questions are for the owner or his representative, but if one of these, I guess I'm not inclined to vote positively on something that the Plan Commission hasn't approved, because it looks like they're changing something with this amendment. But if this goes through with detached accessory dwelling unit, is there a limit, sir, on the footprint for that size?
So there isn't a square footage limitation for accessory dwelling units, that is 1,000 square feet of living space, or residential space, excuse me.
Also, you and I chatted on Monday, has NDOT, since this is on a state road, has NDOT done any review of the line of sight, because I'm concerned about vehicles pulling a trailer, turning in and out of that driveway?
I'm not aware of any analysis provided by NDOT regarding this area. I do recall one of the Plan Commission members visiting the site and seeing that there are shoulders available in the area, especially where the entrance would be for the boat storage location, and that seemed to quell his concern for the same issue.
Also, I didn't think to ask you this on Monday, we talked about, originally there was a house on what was Lot A, and it seems that it's been removed. Was there any kind of demolition permit needed or issued?
So to my understanding, there is an existing manufactured home on Lot, or would be Area A, and we do have a active building permit application in the planning department for the remodel of that building, and within that permit, there isn't any talk about remodeling it into an office. I confirmed with the applicant that they are just talking about, you know, updating the deck and doing a few other updates to the residence, and as it's pertaining only to the residential component of that lot, then that, that permit process is proceeding. But I'm not aware of any demolition that has occurred on site.
I was looking online at some stuff, there actually was a separate house in addition to the manufactured home, and that doesn't appear to be there any longer. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's what it looked like, just in a search on Google Map.
Yeah, with, I could look through the permitting records for the site. The removal of a, a residence or a other structure typically does require a demolition permit through the building department.
No, I think Commissioner Githens covered things.
Okay. All right. Just to clarify, you did address this, but just to be clear, the negative recommendation from staff was related to the boat storage use or the use of a PUD when a subdivision would work?
It was a bit of both, but primarily regarding the comprehensive plan designation of farm and forest.
We will now hear from petitioner, petitioner's representative, you have 15 minutes to offer comments and information. Carmen?
My current representative petitioner, Tom Greenman, petitioner, is, is out of state and was attempting to log on, so if he, if you see he's on, has raised hand, then he has a comment he wants to make, I'm not sure he was going to be successful in that.
Okay, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try and deal with some of the comments there, the, the last of the questions, and then come back to the petition generally. I'm not sure I heard everything the commissioner was asking, so let me address what I thought was being asked. There are remnants of three driveway cuts onto State Road 46 from the full frontage of this. There, historically, there'd been two residential structures on what's roughly the 10-acre piece, and the, there's the site where the manufactured home is, and petitioner's intent has been for a long time to remodel and upgrade that manufacturing home and make it usable. It's really not particularly compatible as it is, so that was part of it. When adding then the boat storage unit, the idea of having an office there for, as for essentially a manager, the position to just deal with the rentals and people coming and going, which is a very limited seasonal issue, this is not a per-day rental type boat storage, it's, it's a seasonal issue. They park the trailers there, when they bring the boats down and put them in the water over the Cutrite Marina, and at the end of the season, when they pull them out of the water, there's the trailer to go get it and take it back home, if that's what they're going to do, or some of those boats would then be stored there over the winter, as opposed to that. So the traffic is not a daily generation type or even a weekend, it's very much a seasonal beginning and ending of the sea boating season that you'll see the traffic there. And, and with that limited use of mine, it makes no sense to have a separate office as such, it was, the idea, the best of all worlds would be have someone who can serve as that manager of that boat storage facility to the extent one is needed, because most of the work is done online in any event, but then also make it a residence, and that's the idea behind that. So if ultimately this gets done and approved, so that the, the building permit needs to be adjusted in light of the, the possible office use and that, then that, that's, will be done. I mean, I don't think, I think the history of this petitioner has been that he's not out there doing things just on his own, he's filing an app, filing for permits, permission to those things that need to be done, and that would be the same with regard to demolition permit if one is needed. I'm not aware that there is one that's needed, and certainly Tom has not identified where he thinks one is, so if that's, we'll take a second look at that issue, if there is a possibility of demolition permit would be required. I want to talk just a minute about the amendment of petitions, because efforts and attempts to clarify and simplify are backfiring, so the, now, during the Plan Commission meetings and discussions, I mean, the, the planning in the long term, perfect planning of what might be done on the site was some open boat storage, some limited cover boat storage. We believe, and there's room to do so, market demands in the future might call for some additional boat storage spaces, whether it's covered or, or open, would be dependent, again, on the market demand. What is it that is being needed for the boats over at the Cutrite Marina, and I don't, to be clear, the petitioner is also the owner and operator of the Cutrite Marina, and so he has firsthand daily experience essentially with people who are looking for places to be able to, to do those storage, the trailers or the boats, whichever it may be, and he's aware of the, of the market demand for that, and that's what he's in part trying to say, and that's why we find this, this site to be and that's why we find this site to be well-suited for that. But the attempt to, with the amended petition, what to clarify and simplify was to get past how many boat storage spaces first development, maybe growth in the future, et cetera, and just capped it at 50 boat storage spaces, period, simple. And that's within what the Plan Commission had heard and believe that the recommendation approval was actually with possibility of different, higher numbers. We're just backing it down to 50 and cabinet at that to make this a little bit easier and a little bit cleaner and simpler. The other issue we tried to accomplish, because I took, Jerry Pittsford made the motion with the, added the condition about the additional dwelling unit restriction, and I actually thought he was trying to address the ongoing confusion about, well, it's one lot, but you can't have two residential units on one lot, but you can in the PUD, and that discussion, I think, got twisted, and I think Jerry tried to cut through that with his, let's just say, one dwelling, one additional unit. I still took that to be two residential dwelling units allowed. So the second amendment was trying to address that. It is two dwelling units, but if we would do the subdivision, they had to be split, only one per lot going forward if we do the subdivision. Drew, and his comments, came back to us that even though they're saying two dwelling units, because the condition that Jerry had imposed was for the DDU, as opposed to a full-fledged standalone, single-family detached dwelling, to specify that would actually be an increase and not a whole fast or a decrease. Therefore, approving it on that basis, if you did, would require to go back to the Plan Commission, and that we have no intent to cause that. So the condition is, the Plan Commission incorporated on their vote and recommendation for approval of one dwelling and one DDU is accepted. No change on that. We'll keep it, try and keep this as simple as possible. That's accepted. What we do with the second petition, which I understand does not require any return to the Plan Commission or any other changes, to cap the boat storage at 50 spaces, but will stand. We'll continue with that commitment to limit the use to that. Now, back to the petitionist general. Why a PUD? I know that this was an issue. Staff report, well, they don't have to PUD. It could be rezoned LB, and that would be a permitted use, therefore you don't need the PUD. But we're not asking for a straight rezoned LB. I don't believe anybody that I know of wants a straight rezoned to LB there. That would introduce the possibility of lawful permitted uses far ranging to what we would intend, and I think that you would want there. And to extent that the PUD works very well, in this case, to do exactly what we want to do and intend to do. It's a limited commercial use for boat storage only, and associated office with that. Look where this is located. I mean, historically, one of the issues, it's not only a cleanup problem that petitioner has with the property, but it's very clear, and you've got a packet of color photographs that shows the level debris and stuff there. But this property, historically, had been used for boat storage, informally, perhaps, maybe even illegally, I don't know, under the ordinance and applicable at the time, but there've been boats stored on the, scattered all over, no control, no methodology to it. In colorful language, one of the neighboring landowners talked about the auto businesses' operations that used to run from there. There are no tubs of fluids and solvents and that type of stuff, but there's a lot of auto debris and abandoned parts, abandoned pieces of automobiles, as well as other metal objects. And his colorful language would have termed it a different type of use than just auto, but that's gone, and what was left are hundreds and hundreds of abandoned tires. This is a refuge site, scattered metal parts, materials, not from just cars and boats and trailers, but according to Tom, it's other pieces of metal. This became somebody's dump site. Now, when Tom bought the property, he knew that. I mean, it was obvious, and he's been working on the cleanup, and there's a good bit to go. Some of it will be slowed now, and it's going to be able to pick up here soon, because finding the abandoned tires is somewhat difficult with growth. The matted grasses and the trees and leaves, it just obscures them, makes them harder to find. When things die down here and get sown, as it's starting that process now, then he'll be back with his people to further inspect the property, to help locate additional abandoned tires that they'll get removed from there. They have filled huge dumpsters already with abandoned tires. I mean, it's an expense to them, but they're getting it done. It's just going to take a while yet, and part of it has been delayed, waiting for the weather to assist us in that process by knocking down the foliage to make it easy to find them. So historically, we're not trying to introduce some of that. Actually, it hadn't all been being done. We don't have a neighbor objecting to it, or within about two miles of Cutrite Marina, so it makes it a very short trip from boat storage to the Marina, where our users will be for the boat storage. It's on the state highway, which means it's not on a road that's limited by width or size or quality or grade. It makes it a very suitable road for use. It's on a site, historically, it's been had this type of use on it already, and to some extent, questions being asked about sightlines and stuff. Yes, NDOT has to approve and grant new driveway connections, new driveway permits essentially to connect to the state road. Those old ones, we can't just step in and start using them. They've been abandoned, they probably don't even meet current standards for what would be amount on the one, at least deemed a commercial driveway cut. And so NDOT will be required to review and approve that, and they may or may not require some conditions of that. And pass on other projects, if they had any concerns for sightline or related things, access to the driveway, then we end up with passing blisters or requirement even for a short lane, so there's a stacking lane in the middle of that. So that would be an issue with, I dot raised, we do not anticipate there will be anything required, given the condition of the road there, the sightlines that are available. If you go out and have a chance to drive and see, I don't think NDOT's going to have any problem. I'll be quite surprised if in the end, as part of the approval, they require even a passing blister, but that's, again, that's a matter that has to be addressed with NDOT, and it will be. That will be a condition of the issue of the driveway permits. I understand it's zone force, farm force, or whatever that code is, but, you know, that's a comp plan issue, and the comp plan is, should be given due regard, and then in all zoning decisions, that's actually law, and one of the things you're supposed to consider, and we understand that. But it's also not a carved-in-stone, nothing-can-change issue. I mean, you put that zone on what, about 15% or 18% of the county land, zone land, in a broad brush approach, not individual consideration for this particular site, nor could you at the time, and we understand that. But you put the boat storage only in an LB zone, which now limits where that can be done. Right now, to find an LB zone that, to try to do boat storage use, means not only going across the causeway, but then up the State Road 446, some distance to some other commercial node properties. A PUD that limits the commercial node development in this area to this boat storage use, which is a compatible use with the nearby Marina, and it's on a road that's perfectly suited for this, and an area this type of use has been done historically, and the process of getting this reestablished to clean up an eyesore, which actually is much more an eyesore, I think all speaks to why this should be approved. It's a reasonable use, a controlled and limited use in the right place, and it has, you know, if you want to start, you think, well, let's reach for some justification for it. It's an environmental issue. It limits road traffic for people trying to find, how far do they have to drive pulling a trailer to find a place to store it? How far do they have to drive to find a place to store their boat for the winter? How far do they have to drive if they have to take it home, because they can't find someplace? So, I mean, you can pick and find environmental-friendly issues why this should be approved, but the reality is, it's a reasonable use of the land, it's an appropriate use of the land at this location, given the nearby Marina, and it certainly does not introduce a use that's not been there historically, and being introduced in a way that is controlled and limited and appropriate, and we'll ask you to prove it. And I don't know if anybody sees Tom have a hand raised or not, but...
Mr. Greenman, are you online? You have two minutes. See him? No?
Well, just to be clear, and I think just answering again, and just giving this question, the petition is, the second amendment petition, which limited boat storage to 50 spaces, would stand, and that doesn't cause any disruption of the Plan Commission recommendation. The issue, the two dwelling units, is withdrawn as such, and that would leave us with the staff, the Plan Commission restriction as part of their recommendation in their vote of one dwelling unit and a detached additional dwelling unit possibility, and we understand.
Could you stay there, see if we have questions? Could you stay for a moment? Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I have some questions about boat storage, and I don't know if that's going to be reasonable. I understand that boats are frequently shrink-wrapped when they're stored. Is that then called covered storage?
The covered storage normally would avoid the shrink wrap. According to Tom Greenman, the petitioner, his anticipation is little boat, actual boat storage, and it's more going to be the trailer storage, and the trailer storage on the open space is perfectly fine. He does not encourage the shrink wrap, which is why if there's going to be a lot of boat storage there, he would look to make some of it covered to deal with that, because frankly, the shrink wrap by itself is an environmental problem, in the sense of that shrink wrap and the waste from that, and what do you dispose of that at the end of the season when you're unwrapping it? So he actually is not trying to encourage using the shrink wrap, but the extent that it's going to be used, they'll try to avoid that and turn part of that into covered storage, which doesn't guarantee it, but it usually would stop people from putting the effort into shrink wrapping.
I see. Because I'm not very comfortable with the thought of the shrink wrapping, and I'm not sure that just not encouraging it is really sufficient.
Let me ask you a question. I'm not sure I heard everything you just said, but when you're, I'm not sure what you're saying about your objection to the shrink wrapping issue. This site, if that was a visibility and aesthetic issue, then you couldn't appreciate unless you go out and drive by or stop and look at the site. The boat storage area is, will be essentially invisible from the road. Now, to the extent that it's not, Tom has some plans, notwithstanding the no landscaping, to do some additional plannings to help obscure, but his intent is to not make this readily visible for the road, because he doesn't, that's not what he wants either. So if that's an aesthetic issue, he is addressing that, but that's not, okay?
No, it's not aesthetic, it's more environmental. I, that much use of plastic that's just going to be thrown away, and I'm not, I'll have to admit, I have no idea of how you go about shrink wrapping a boat, and I don't know what kind of equipment is used and what kind of byproducts or whatever there might be.
This is not going to be an answer to your question, because I don't have details to give you that answer, but I'm not certain, if I understand the question right, your concern correctly, is I don't sure why it's a concern here, when it would be the same concern for every boat storage facility and every LB zone lot in the county. This is no different. I mean, I don't know.
It is. But this is a new boat storage. This is an added new boat storage.
But if not here, it will be someplace. I mean, if this were an LB zone, we'd be doing it, and you would, I don't know, we having this conversation, this concern, if this were LB zone, where it was by right permitted, I mean, if you go up, if you want to go far enough, State Road 46 and go north, you'll get to an LB zone where there's boat storage, some existing, and rooms to do more if you want to drive that far. So I honestly, I don't understand why that would be, that by itself is an issue for this site, but that's up to you.
Commissioner Giffens, do you have comments or questions?
Well, yes. In looking at the map, the petitioner's draft site plan, I have gone out to the location, okay? And so I've seen where the manufactured home is, and the actual site plan indicates that boat storage will be closer to the road than the manufactured home is, and those are clearly visible from the road. I've got pictures, and Google Maps has pictures, so I find this a little disingenuous to be saying that this won't be visible from the road. I also am not supportive of just gravel driveways here. They get very compacted, and at a certain point, there's not a lot of difference in terms of the drainage between those compacted driveways and the pavement, and certainly, if there were pavement, if there were leakages from different things, hopefully that would help with any kind of pollutants and stop them from going into that detention pond, which can then go right into other parts of the soil in the county.
At the lake.
At the lake, yeah. I, when you talk about covered, covered can mean 100 different things, well, five or six at least. Is it just a roof over it with open sides? Is it completely enclosed? Because there was also a thing about if they added the additional part that would go on the north side for additional storage, that's only 3,000 square feet, I think, which is not very much. I mean, we have houses here that are much larger than 3,000 square feet. You're not going to fit a lot of boats or trailers into that.
Covered boat storage generally means three-sided, one side open, two-sided, covered, three-sided. That's generally what you get with covered boat storage. The issue, your questions or comments with regard to stone and runoff and that, and this was submitted to a specific drainage plan to the Drainage Board, which included all those issues of gravel and stone and site and the location of the detention pond, and that was all part of the drainage plan submitted to and approved by the Drainage Board. So I don't know what else I can comment on that. But the, as the location of that dome, I think we, if I said will be invisible, I said, I thought it was said, it was his intent that it not be readily visible, and that's so, it will be back off the road a ways. It's not going to be in front of, per se, in front of that manufactured home you see there, and I don't, he may, I don't know, he didn't commit to relocation that or turning that and moving it any closer to the road. I think the intent is to keep it where it is, but with the grade of the property, which is actually, these sites are all within what is defined as the builder area, they're relatively flat, but that within that, there is, there are room, and he's commented about to extent that he needs to, and his plan would be to add some additional plannings just to help obscure screening. It's not intended and not committing to making a berm and a vegetative opaque wall, that's not planned at all, but to have it set back and some appropriate screening, some of which we think is already there, and the grade level, that's what we're talking about, about not making it readily visible. And that actually even goes to the signage, though his plan is, he didn't ask for anything special in signage, because he doesn't want any big advertising signs. There'd be a relatively small sign at the entrance, just so that people turning in there will, we have confirmation, they're at the right place, but people looking for these boat storage, this is almost all done with GPSs and internet, finding locations that they know where they're going, but there'll be a small sign at the entrance just to confirm that when they turn in here, they're in the right place.
Let you. So the plan in, just talking about dwelling units, okay? The plan in Area A is a dwelling unit and an office?
Combined. The dwelling unit, the manufactured home would, is almost a home-based business, to be able to put what would qualify as a small office in there.
So no other dwelling unit will be built on Area A?
Correct.
Okay. Area B, right? So we've gone through this, and I appreciate your willingness for us to, you know, if we approve this, to go back to the 926 condition of the Plan Commission, for clarity's sake, okay? So according to that, you can have in Area B, a dwelling unit and a detached accessory dwelling unit, not greater than 1,000 square feet.
Correct.
So, but then I also see in the information provided in the updated commitment that there's a potential for subdividing that property. Now, if you subdivided that property, what would you do with that? what would you do with that?
Used as is. Two residential, when this started, the plan, the proposal was two single-family homes, residential structures on that roughly 10-acre piece, consistent with what's been there. But you can still see the remnants of the foundation where the two homes that used to be there were. And so if we leave it on one lot, the 10 acres, two residential structures on there, that means one owner, same owner. And so at some point, the petitioner may want to not be the owner of two residential units on there, whether the rentals are otherwise, and the only way he's going to be able to sell one is to do a subdivision so that each residence unit would be its own lot. But that's the issue of the future subdivision, not to change the use, but it would separate the two dwelling units on two separate lots that then makes them marketable.
Right, but correct me if I'm wrong, you wouldn't, if you have a daddoo of 1,000 square feet and a dwelling unit on 10 acres in Area B, and then you subdivide the property, it's no longer a detached accessory dwelling unit, it is now a single-family dwelling unit detached?
Which depend on what would be done. That may also require a proposed amendment to the PUD to allow that, if, yes.
But it would need, it would also need its own septic if the lots are divided?
Well, the daddoo requires its own septic anyway. That's...
Not necessarily.
There's also, there's identification of where two septic tanks have been located previously. But yes, I mean, even the single-family home and a daddoo would require independent septic systems already. That's still given too.
Yeah.
But as, following along with this, there's nothing that says that they, that future division wouldn't have the single-family home and the daddoo on one lot, and then another house would be built on the second lot.
Right. It's not precluded, and it's very nebulous in this writing about what might happen after a lot is subdivided, and that is concerning, but on its own, in its own, in its own way, because it could be...
This is the PUD. If you're suggesting there's going to be an increase in intensity and a change of use, that's going to require a PUD amendment because it's not permitted in the outline plan of the PUD now.
Right, except that you've already written that Area B may be subdivided, so that's already part, that would already be part of the PUD.
We didn't have to include that in the PUD statement at all. That was a statement for, because the staff asked, and the ordinance suggests that you should kind of outline what might be the phasing in the future development of this. So now we're down, we have a property of 10 acres, perfectly suitable for subdivision, has a history of two septic systems and two residential structures on it. In the PUD, I thought we were getting that done. Apparently not with the restriction, so...
But you would actually have three dwelling units, right? Because there's the manufactured home.
That's on a different lot. That's on the five-acre piece, not on the 10 acres.
But it's all part of the same PUD?
Part of the same PUD. The PUD outline statement identifies use Area A as one residential unit, the manufactured home, with possible office and the boat storage. Use Area B now identifies one residential unit with the possible additional dwelling unit. That's all it identifies as a use in that area. So if there would be a subdivision that would also lead to increasing the intensity of the use in some manner, that would require a PUD outline that would come back to you first.
It would, yeah, it would. Okay. Other questions or comments for the petitioner? We'll come back for final comments, but we'll go ahead and hear from the public. Okay.
Yeah, I'm a little confused about whether or not we incorporate this amendment about, that doesn't refer to the second residence, if I understand this correctly.
Yeah.
The second residence in the amendment.
I can craft that, if you want that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to override what was approved by the Plan Commission.
Right. Okay. Let's go ahead and see if there's any comment, thank you, sir, on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. First we'll hear from folks who are supportive of this endeavor, this petition. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the podium. Any other public comment? Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Myers, for putting that on the screen. That's really helpful. Perfect. All right. Any other comments or thoughts? Actually, Mr. Carmen has a five-minute rebuttal, even though nobody said anything, but you're welcome to add a five-minute statement if you'd like, sir. Did you want to add a five-minute statement?
Don't want to, nothing new. I just want to make sure, since there was a question raised there. So the petition before you, that we were asking you to approve, would be, as originally submitted, with clarification then, based on the Second Amendment, that the boat storage spaces would be limited to 50. Anything beyond that would have to come back as a PUD amendment. The effort to clarify and get two standalone single-family dwelling units on the possibility of initially on one 10-acre lot with a possible subdivision in the future is withdrawn. The recommendation of the Plan Commission, which was approval on the condition of one single-family home and the additional dwelling unit, is accepted. We did not intend to make this more intense, and that's apparently what we were doing with, according to what Drew has said, so fine. We'll go back to that then.
Got it. Thank you. All right. I just, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I really am concerned about boat storage and RV storage and auto lot storage, impound lots, et cetera, because, you know, there is the issue of wrapping and the environmental issue of that. I don't think people want to see boats from the roadway. I think that's really terrible-looking. You know, I grew up in Michigan, and the boat storage places are all right next to the lake, so you didn't see it unless you were on the lake, and, you know, so it wasn't a big deal. But there's, the concern I have is, especially with RV storage, but also with boat storage, is something I raised during the CDO meetings in the last week or so, is the fact that we have to contain those spills that come off of boats and RVs. That's the kind of, and you're right next to the lake, right? Which is terrible. So that's an issue for me, and I like the idea of covered, but there's nothing here that requires it. It's, you know, it's a, oh, wouldn't it be great? But covering, there's a way to do a inset without doing sewer, without doing even a septic. You can do an inset collection tank to collect any fluids or liquids that come off of these boats or RVs or whatever they're going to be. So I'm hopeful that in the very, very near future, we're going to have a lot more clarity for residents on this. I don't, I think we should avoid doing a PUD when something else could be used. And in this case, it could be, not even, no, just a, just a division, a subdivision into two lots, one with the house, and then they can add the daddoo, the other with the house slash office with the boat storage, which would have to be a different, and just putting it under PUD doesn't make the fact that it is a limited business enterprise near the lake on 446 disappear. It's still, you're still zoning it limited business in essence, and yes, you're only doing it for one use, but that's a concern for me, is having, you know, why not just do it more simply? And it really doesn't fit with this, with this zone. It really doesn't, in my book, which is why I voted against it initially. But if, but I'll go ahead and take final comments. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Giffens, any final comments?
No, I did drive out there over the weekend and saw all the other boat storages nearby and saw the shrink-wrapped boats at some of the places, and I found it discouraging too, to have that. But that's, that's an issue with boat owners, I think, in relation to this specific location.
Right, right. No, it's certainly not that. So shall I go, I'm going to go ahead and propose an amendment because the petitioner's representative agreed that, that we, this includes the Plan Commission condition of approval from September 26, 2024, quote, "Area B will include, to include, two single-family residences on one lot of record, one being an accessory to the other, with the requirement that they follow the underlying zoning district," end of quote. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we amend ordinance 2024-46 and the statement of commitment from the petitioner with petitioner's agreement, verbal agreement to that. So all those in favor of approving this amendment?
I'll second, I'll second your motion.
Second, sorry, thank you. All those in favor of approving the amendment? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so amendment's been approved, so it's now an amended ordinance. It's not really, we haven't really amended the ordinance, but we've amended portion of it, so we'll call it an amended ordinance. Anything else from my colleagues on this item? Other questions, comments, anything for staff? Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and call the roll on the amended ordinance 2024-46. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No.
I'm taking my mind out.
Okay, well, Mr. Cocker, will you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry.
Just for clarity's sake.
Amos?
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Motion fails. Two to one.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. We don't have any appointments today, but I do have some announcements to, and see if my colleagues have anything they want to announce first, and then I'll get my notes up.
I again want to thank Mr. Baton, Dr. Baton, rather, for the excellent job he did with the election results. I think ongoing, this will be a real service to the members of our community.
Yeah, I think so too. Anything else? Okay, so just some quick notes. We are closed on Monday in honor of Veterans Day. There are a number of events throughout the community. We'll be sure to get those uploaded somewhere on our website because they run all day long. Do you again want to thank the poll workers, candidates, voters, everyone who's participated in democracy? Really appreciate it. There is a Monroe County CASA training, court-appointed special advocate training. It will begin January 21, 2025, and run through February 20th, Tuesday and Thursday evenings, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. You can go to monroecounticasa.org, C-A-S-A dot org, or call 333-2272. We are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Please go to co.monroe.in.us, and you may find the link for boards and commissions, including the link to the application. There is a blood drive at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall, and if you'd like to make an appointment, go to redcross.org today, 1:00 to 6:00, Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, and 2:00 in December, December 11th from 1:00 to 6:00, and December 13th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00. While you're at our county website, we encourage you to connect with and sign up for the county's notification system. Just click on the megaphone and follow the instructions. I'll also note that we do have office hours six times per month. You can go to the calendar on our homepage at co.monroe.in.us. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? All right, we do have a work session, so can we come back at 11:45? Yes? Great. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.